Roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Everyone's accounted for, and I appreciate that. So, go ahead and do the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance, please. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and thank you very much to Mr. Volter for bringing Mr. Hagan to the prayer. First on our report tonight is the mayor's report. It's been a really fun month to be mayor of the city of Dayton, Kentucky. We've had a lot of fun with the Cincinnati Bengals and their successes, with the renaming of our city temporarily to the city of Who Dayton, Kentucky. We've gotten a lot of great national and international over to London press on our representation. So, I really appreciate our council and our administration and our staff for putting forth a really good foot to celebrate our Cincinnati Bengals and bring Dayton's name to the international light. So, well done, everybody. Who day, Who day ten. That's all I have for our mayor's report. So, moving along to the motion to accept the minutes from the January 4th, 2022 meeting. Member Kelly's made the motion to accept. Do I have a second? Do we have any comments?
Quickly here. So, we are now tying our microphones directly into the cameras so people at home can hear. We've had a problem. So, when you all are speaking or making motions, please hit the red button here to make sure it's on. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Member Neiman. We have a motion from Member Kelly and a second from Member Neiman. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Any opposition? So forth. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Campbell County Judge Executive Steve Pendry. Mr. Pendry, welcome to Dayton City Council Meeting.
Is it working? Wow, okay. I really appreciate you offering us a few minutes to speak with you this evening. And first thing I want to do is congratulate you on your cleverness here. I don't know who dreamed this up or dreamt this up, but it's a wonderful thing. Who day. I like that. Yeah. Who day. In Campbell County, I don't know that we accomplish much if we don't work together. And that same concept holds true across Northern Kentucky. We don't have one big city to organize ourselves around. We're not Lexington or Louisville. And yet, Northern Kentucky has produced more jobs than Louisville and Lexington over the course of the last generation. In the last five years, Northern Kentucky produced like 11,000 net new jobs, while the entire state of Kentucky lost 42,000 jobs in the same timeframe. So, we have a lot to be grateful for. And I would tell you that the sort of ethic that's been established by my predecessors in office and many of you that says that we compete best by cooperating. Everybody's on to something there. That's how we get ahead. And I want to thank you for the part that you play in that. And having pointed out that we all benefit from that, I've got another example that I wanted to talk to you about tonight. I think everybody is familiar with some of the serious disadvantages that we all suffered from during the COVID times, which are with us today naturally. For instance, if anybody had to work from home or had kids home from school that needed to be educated from a distance or have an elderly parent that needed to communicate with their doctor remotely, you all probably would have noticed that bandwidth is an issue. And you have to go one at a time sometimes. Or even a single person would have difficulty getting the pipeline that they need for information to be transmitted the way you'd rather it happen. And by happy coincidence, the three Northern Kentucky counties have been working for years with Cincinnati Bell and others to try to come up with a solution to that problem. And in years past, what we found is the average amount of money that it takes to connect people that don't have any service right now is, has been way too high for Bell or one of their competitors to cover. And it's also true that delivering bandwidth to those who already have connections is an issue that is problematic if there's not enough investment. So, the three counties have been working on that. The federal money that has come our way has provided us with an opportunity that we really didn't want to pass up. And I would also say that the price of making connections has been dropping, not terribly dramatically, but steadily over the years. So, having noticed the opportunity and having worked on things, we put out an RFP. Actually, Boone County led the way. And the three Northern Kentucky counties ultimately entered into a contract with the so-called winner in the contest among people who submitted proposals, and that's Cincinnati Bell, to provide fiber optic cable to the door of every residence and every business that wants it in Northern Kentucky. So, upon the completion of this project, Northern Kentucky will be the largest area in the nation that has fiber to the door. And the importance of that is so long as back office speeds are high at Cincinnati Bell, fiber optic cable is sort of a future-proof technology in that there's not anything better and there's nothing that is in the technological forecast that appears it will be better for decades into the future potentially. So, once you have fiber installed from your provider to your door, you've got a pipeline that can be filled. Well, maybe I shouldn't put it that way. Cannot be filled, no matter how much data you pull through that pipeline. Yes, you have to pay for a connection, and you pay according to bandwidth they're providing. But there's unlimited, virtually unlimited potential in the future to expand. You don't need to do another thing so far as the infrastructure goes. So, the counties, again, having worked together, seized that opportunity. Within three years, we're assured, everybody in Campbell County and everybody across Northern Kentucky will have such a connection. And in fact, the project's well ahead of schedule. And there already have been hundreds, if not a couple thousand, a couple thousand people who have been provided service that they formerly didn't have. And people are getting upgrades to the service, or there's the capability of getting upgrades to the service they have currently. What's in it for everyone is a thing called the affinity program. Cincinnati Bell has a pricing structure that says if you get 250 megabytes, you know, here's your cost. If you get a 500 megabyte connection, here's what the cost is, 750 and a gig. And they are going to, for everybody in Northern Kentucky, if you ask for 500, you're going to be charged the current 250 rate. If you ask for 750, it'll be the current 500 megabyte rate. So, whether or not you have a connection now, you can get more bandwidth for the same amount of money and certainly less money than would otherwise be the case if we flagged a project like this. All three counties are contributing a portion of the money that we've received from the feds. You may be familiar with the fact that it's hard to spend that money. I mean, there are lots of restrictions that apply. This is one that's in the clear. And, you know, the contract's been let and the process is underway. So, with that, I guess if anyone has a question about this particular matter. Yes, sir.
Pleasure will be how many years?
What we were assured when the contract was signed, this process has been underway for months now, is that they would be, this project would be completed within three years. They are ahead of schedule. And they provide us with a chart that has, that actually has a green dot for every house that's been connected. What's strange about this is there, it's almost like there's not rhyme or reason. The build-out proceeds according to where they have nodes and where they already have some infrastructure in place. And trying to predict for any given household or a particular city how long it's going to take to complete the project is not really possible. But we could show you our chart and what's happened so far, if you're interested. I don't have it on.
But that's a great question, and unfortunately, that's the answer.
Anybody else?
Well, go ahead.
So, I work in technology, and I work in bandwidth. And I understand how important it is to have high availability bandwidth to everybody in this region. It's good for jobs. It's good for homeschooling. In Dayton, that's huge for us. So, your efforts and the other two executive judges that have worked on this with Cincinnati Bell, I commend you. Thank you so much for your work on this, and it's huge for our city.
I agree. Each of the judge executives is on the board at Triad. And this, of course, becomes something that we're broadcasting to the rest of the world as a reason to move your business to Northern Kentucky. And there are people that are interested in it, not just for their sake, but businesses tend to go where the executive teams and department heads and so forth are interested in creating their new home. And this is something they want to hear.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, okay. If you have questions about anything else, I brought along the auxiliary brains for Campbell County. We have a great staff. And two of the best things that I'm hiring is Matt Elbert Bell, who is a spirit of, he Dayton has on his board stock.
It's nice. It looks nice.
Yeah. And Justin Pato is on technology development, community development. Well, he's a long-sighted business owner as well. And he's excellent as well. They look forward to working with you. And they want to have a first date as well as a second. And they would be glad to agree.
Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you.
Moving along on the agenda, next up is the audience comments regarding any legislation for tonight's agenda. So, if you have any comments from the public that would like to address council for tonight's agenda, you're more than welcome to take the podium. I'm going to go ahead and close the podium in three, two, and one. Podium is closed. Moving along to the ordinances and orders of resolutions. The first reading of ordinance 2022 number one, amending chapter nine four of the City of Dayton Code of Ordinances dealing with littering and dumping on private and public properties. Ms. Ledger, please.
Give you a little background on this. That's Member Neary, lives up near Sargent Park. And on his regular walks, he sees constantly people throwing litter into that park. And he asked me to look into it a little bit. So, I looked at our ordinance. And our ordinance unfortunately was written to prohibit dumping on private property. For some reason, it doesn't say anything about public property. So, these changes are now reflecting that dumping or littering on public or private property is actionable by our code enforcement as well as our police department. There's also a criminal law as well, so we just cleaned that up a little bit, and that's why it's all been good.
Thank you, Member Neary. Thank you. Ms. Ledger, please. Again, a first reading. Thank you. Next in line is ordinance 2022 number two, a first reading, amending the annual budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
Background here. Every year, we have to do a fiscal year budget. That's done in generally months leading up to July, which has a budget. And someone told me when I was the city manager in Chevy, and he says, "The one thing you always don't got a budget is that it will never be exactly what your budget was." And so, things change, revenues change, expenses change, and we're required by law to reflect those changes. So, this is doing that now. We'll probably have one more at the end of the year to finalize and amend a fiscal 2122 budget. Around the same time, we also approved the 2022 budget. So, I talked to a few council members about some of the issues and amendments. If you have any questions, Jared and I would be happy to answer them. Jared's been the one kind of driving the budget train here. He's preparing a new budget next year that will be much more in-depth and probably transparent than our old budgets. And so, he's also the one that's helping with all of this as well. So, I'll be happy to translate that.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. Again, it's first reading, ordinance 2022 number two. Ms. Ledger, please. Thank you, Ms. Ledger. Next up is the order resolution 2022 number six Romeo, accepting the resignation of Steve Codel from the Ethics Commission. Drive a motion to accept 2022 number six Romeo. Mr. Volter's made the motion to approve. Do I have a second? Member Kelly's made a second. Do you have any comments? Well, first of all, I'll make a comment. I like to thank Mr. Codel for his years of service on the Ethics Commission. He's moving out of town. That unfortunately happens, and we appreciate his service. Roll call, please, Ms. Ledger. Eyes have it, yes, boy. Second on the agenda is the order resolution number 2022 number seven Romeo, appointing Rodney Sparks to the Dayton Planning and Zoning Commission. Drive a motion to accept Mr. Sparks for the Dayton Planning and Zoning Commission. Member Neiman has made the motion. Do I have a second? Oh, Scott has a second. Any comments regarding Mr. Sparks on the commission? He's pretty great. Do we have a roll call, please, Ms. Ledger? The eyes have it. Moving right along to the department head's report. We'll go in authentic order. Mr. Atkins from Fire Department. You always win with the authentic order, don't you?
I'm not sure "win" is the word I would use, but yes. So, thank you all. You have my report. You have my report. A couple of things I want to touch on. You notice January was a busy month. We're up 19% just the first month of the year compared to this time last year. So, it could be ominous sign or a good sign depending on how you look at it. I want to recognize one of my guys. We always push training. It's part of our job staying up on things. And we have a couple of guys that already have degrees. My guy took it upon his own while working full-time for us, part-time for another fire department, and finished up and completed his associate's degree with Ryan Ware. So, I just kind of want to recognize him and give him a little bit of props for that because it's kind of a big deal. Like I said, continued education and training is huge for us. So, anytime someone else likes to do that kind of stuff, we want to make sure to give them some recognition. I'm happy to say we're full. We're full up. We hired somebody at the end of the month, December 1st, January, and they're now full. We spent the last six months of last year with a short person. This person, he came back to us. He left and realized that W Dayton is his home. And so, that's what we're trying to do, is create a culture where people want to come, not leave. And so, he decided he wanted to come back, so he will come back. That's really about all I have for this time. Oh, we have a fireboard meeting coming up on the 16th, 6:00 p.m. At the Callahan Center in Bellevue.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Chief Atkins tonight?
That's them. I don't take any credit. It's all those guys talking off of us.
I'll say thanks to all the work that you guys done and thanks to Mr. Ware for his continued education. That's great. We're building a great department, and we're keeping them. That's amazing. And that's due to your leadership and the atmosphere. Well done.
Those all those guys, I can't take any credit for that.
You're humble.
All right. Thank you all.
Mr. Halfhill, you are second in authentic order for the chief of police of Dayton.
I have my reports for January. I don't have anything else to add.
Talk a little about the statistics that the council got about crime in the city house gone down each year, the last four years?
Yeah, I'm going to be putting something out too with the vision meeting that we're going to have Thursday, it would still go with the weather. I did, at first, I did four years, but we went back five years just to show our call volume, reports that we've taken, arrests, and a whole slew of different activities as far as, like I said, accidents, juvenile activity, things that, you can see a trend that it's moving downward. The only trend that's kind of moving upward is our juvenile problem. And that's kind of, I guess, national, having problems with keeping the kids under control and fighting with each other. This is kind of had an uptick of that. But it's not too great, but it is slowly increasing as far as vandalizing properties, assaults, issues like that. If anybody else had a question of that, hopefully the graph works good enough to show the steady decline that we're showing in the city. The guys have done a lot of hard work over the five years addressing certain things, certain activities that we've, any complaints that come out, we try to address them as soon as possible. And I think people see the activity that the officer can do.
The thing you don't see in all communities is that the community really helps the police department. When there's issues happening, they participate, they have to talk to police. And that's not always the case in some communities, somewhere.
Yes, it has to do with, I don't know, being invisible, just being approachable. You've got to be approachable. If you're not approachable, people aren't going to approach you with any activity. I've lived in the city now for almost 25 years now. So, I've developed a lot of relationships with a lot of people, you know, with coaching basketball and things like that. Other officers are getting out there in the community, doing things for the kids, doing things for the school, fundraisers, stuff we're going to have at the park. We'll have some activities like we did last year. I have dates that we plan on doing some things. And we'll probably have some things that we'll probably add along the way. But we'll put something out for our vision for next year, I'm sorry, the 2022 year for things we're going to be doing in the community. Try to get it out there a little bit ahead of time. So, it's not something that's just kind of popping up. We get a little bit more response. But I think that's the key, is just being able to be approachable, being out in the community where people are comfortable with coming and talking to the folks.
Does anybody from council have any questions or comments or concern for Mr. Halfhill?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, I kind of saw, I kind of saw for January how, because I don't think we had 69 in the whole year. I think last year. We just had a lot of people coming in to want the vacation checks. We just had more of an uptick, I guess, before taking more vacations. And the officers were doing, I think we're having like anywhere between 10 or 12 a day throughout the month, Monday through Sunday. They'd always have up to 69. I saw that number too, and I was like, whoa. We just had a lot more vacation checks than we usually commonly have. I'm sure that has something to do with it. We have a lot more people coming in to the office that are actually doing it. And more people were, I guess, since we're having a quarter winter, people were leaving to go to Florida and leaving for extended periods of time. So, they're going for several months. So, it adds up.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Halfhill? Thank you, Chief. You guys do good work. Kind of the start of tonight because what we've had in the last couple of weeks and what we're about to have this week, if the meteorologists are correct, is Mr. Lucas on Public Works. He's done an amazing job of keeping our streets clean and keeping us.
Get a report in.
Ready to go.
Well, Mr. Lucas, I'd just like to thank you in advance for, you know, working 96 hours over the next couple of days. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably going to happen. Now, we do our typical stuff. I mean, we did a lot of footholds this month. We had a chance in between. I actually took off two days last week. Two whole days. I babysitted my granddaughters, a three-month-old, a three-year-old. It was great. And we did get our new piece of equipment in last week, our new backhoe. And for itself today, we were able to put a salt box on a dump truck with two guys. Miss Patterson there came up, backed our truck up towards. Or normally it'd take four or five guys to do it. And then half the time, so, I mean, it's a nice piece of equipment. I appreciate everybody supporting it, and we really needed the van. Yeah, we're all set up. I got four trucks set up right now. And we're ready for it. We got 70, 80 tons of salt in stock. So, we should be ready for about everything. I even ordered snow chains today. Hopefully, they'll be here tomorrow, just in case. Because we're like anybody else. I mean, if it gets quarter inch wide, we're not getting up the hill. You know, we have the backup and all that good stuff. So, I think we'll be fine. And the last snowstorm, we had our garage door fail on us. Of course, you know, it got stuck open and not closed. And we had to call our security team. And Miss Patterson again, she came up and sat up there in the open garage till we're about three. She came up and sat up there in the open garage till we're about three hours to the door company got there to repair it or at least get it closed for that night. And, um, I told her about today and she said the only thing she's going to ask for. You about that? But no, it's, uh, if anybody's got any questions, I mean, like I said, we're ready and we'll do what goes.
How's, how's your staff looking like? You know, I know, I know we kind of run, run thin.
Yeah, for, since last Thursday, it's just myself and Jordan. And, uh, Bryson comes back tomorrow.
There's a COVID issue, right?
Yes, there's a COVID issue, um, with his little baby and with his wife.
But, but you guys are doing all right?
Yeah, we're doing fine. I mean, he's going to test himself in the morning before he comes in just to make sure. He'll be in a truck by himself and he'll wear a mask the whole time he's, the whole time he's there. And we'll load his truck instead of him letting, and I got both of my guys trained on the Bobcat so they can load their trucks by themselves. So when we're all out and one runs out of salt, he can go up and do it himself now. That saves, that saves a little time. And, uh, we're, uh, we're going to be looking here. I mean, right now is not a good time for me because to find somebody that's experienced and ready to go. And Jay, Jay sent me a guy's name and I think he may be a little overqualified, but, right? I mean, with the jobs he's had, I mean, but, you know, and I have another application that I'm going to call, he's a young boy too. Other than that, that's all I have. I haven't had any more questions.
Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Appreciate you. Last but certainly not least, Ms. Patterson on, uh, code enforcement.
Um, you have my report and, um, here it is. Explain, Tori, but, um, on these, you'll see that there's quite a few that we bill for the vacant properties. Luckily enough, there's, that was a big chunk. Occasionally you'll see one or two or, so these were all billed, um, six months ago. We're billing them every six months and then after a year it's, um, it jumps up to a thousand. So right now they're five hundred. Um, and then, um, with the top ten list, we're still working on that. Um, we have one, um, our number one property, we've been working with the bank on that. Kind of waiting to hear back from them on what's going to happen. These people just walked away, but unfortunately they're still paying their mortgage. And the mortgage company is paying their taxes. So, so sometimes your hands get tied on things like this, but they have thousands of dollars in their fund. So we're trying to work with them, figure out what, how they're going to handle it, how we're going to handle it. I know you guys won't have a list, but, um, so a couple of these they're going to sell, um, and.
Pursued.
Yes.
They're going up for sale on the twenty-second at the courthouse doors of the master contractor.
Yes.
So those are three that we've been working on for months. It's not a condition that we're happy to see that happening.
Right. Um, and then a couple, you know, we have two that are owned by the same person. He has right now one for sale. Um, and as soon as that sells, he's going to move on to the next. And I'm sure it'll sell. The houses are all crazy right now. So, um, yeah, but other than that, it's, I mean, it's staying pretty steady.
You're doing a really good job and I, and I know you're working really closely with Mr. Fawcett.
Yes.
And, and Mr. Lucas, we appreciate your hard work on this.
And I want to tell you also, um, one of the council members sent me an email and said that, um, I wanted to know if we did keep a spreadsheet for vacant properties? And we do, just in case you were curious, um, and. Again, I invite the public, we have that, um, anonymous forum on there. If you see anything going on, feel free to reach out, shoot an email. And if you see anything going on, shoot an email. Thanks. Mm-hmm. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson.
So if there's, we, you basically still have to, so we can send them to the county, they say, um, so they'll come back and they'll get you to a, a, a property. And I'll have to buy it. And I'll have to do all, do a lot. And unfortunately, most of those don't have, um, warrants on it, and if they do, the bank is kind of dragging their feet before closure and things like that. So. Well, yeah, because, because then we file lien on the property.
Yeah, once we put the lien on the property, we were able to go to court and file what they call warranting order attorney actions when people are dead. And, um, the court points these attorneys who try to go out and find next of kin or anybody related to them, try to get them service. Uh, and then once we do that, we're able to, uh, we're able to then sell the property. Uh, we can't get a personal judgment against them because they're not before the court. We could get a judgment against the property and have it sold and the court should settle.
I think I know which one to talk about. And in that case, parents, um, and everybody in the family is coming to the property. And, um, there isn't, there is a bank involved with that. So, yeah, there is a bank involved with that. So, um, I shoot them an email and everything, they, so it's kind of kept up on that being there. There's some shooting agents who call in and say about their kids here, so, so. Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. And that closes it down for the department heads report, and we will move along to the city administrator's report. Mr. Fawcett.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, so you may have seen a few dump trucks in our city this week. Um, we're going through a bit of growing pains. Uh, right now there's construction going on. Last week, um, Manhattan Boulevard was shut down just past the apartments because they are in the process of raising Manhattan Boulevard, the second section, past the apartments above the, above the Hundy Garden flood level. And to do that, they got to truck in a bunch of soil, a bunch of clean dirt. And Rick told me today that he's talked to the developers doing it and they think, what, three weeks maybe? They have ran forty thousand yards of dirt in order to raise that. So we're going to be dealing with this for a few weeks. So it's short-term pain or a long-term game. So once that's done, then that development along the marina will be able to go forward. But they're also moving concrete from a demolition site to the other end of the marina where they're filling it in. So you've got, uh, one of those O'Rourke trucks bringing in concrete, and the other trucks are bringing in the clean soil for the, um, for the road. So we are, we are having a street cleaner come every couple of days. Is that right, Rick? We're still doing it on Fridays, just regularly. But while these heavy trucks are going through, this heavy traffic's going through, we're going, yeah. So hopefully by the end of the month, end of this month, that will slow down and dissipate a little bit. Uh, other construction trucks will be coming in, but it won't be all these heavy, heavy, um, dump trucks. So just so you're aware, that's going on. So, um, also, uh, on Thursday, we have planned a visioning session, but we know the weather looks like it might be bad. So I just want people to know that that might be continued if it looks like, if we assess things tomorrow, that, that's going to be a pretty bad night for weather. We'd rather have it on a night where people can come down. So that may be continued, maybe to next week. We're not sure yet. Um, but I just want to make people aware, the visioning session planned for Thursday could, could be continued, um, because of the weather. Uh, tomorrow night, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, they're considering two matters. Um, and, uh, hopefully the weather will be okay for that meeting. And that's all I have really.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fawcett. Uh, does anybody have any questions from council for, uh, Mr. Fawcett, the Honorable Jay Fawcett? All right. Well, thank you very much for your report, sir. And moving along to Mr. Ebenson, Alex, the city attorney. Do we have any report for you, sir?
No report. I just wanted to commend all the elected officials for, that decided to run again, um, and the fact that there's no opposition. Congratulations. That doesn't happen unless there is a happy constituent base and, and people in the city are pleased with the progress. So, you know, from someone who ran a lot of races, because apparently you didn't make people happy, um, I would say that it sure beats, uh, it sure beats the alternative. And now you can focus on three years. What a relief not to have to worry the next year about what people think leading up to elections in a short-term market. So congratulations to you all, okay? And Scott, I understand the reasons why, and hopefully the person that comes on, you guys will fit like a glove and, and add a lot to the council. So congrats. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ebenson. Does anybody have any questions for our city attorney, Alex, tonight? Well, thank you very much. We're excited to, uh, to lead this city again with, uh, the great council, uh, great administration. Thank you very much. And that opens up for audience. Does anybody like to take the stage from the audience tonight to address city council administration? Yes, sir. Please state the name and, uh, address.
Uh, Zachary Metz, six eighteen Third Avenue. Um, I just have one question. I kind of asked, uh, Mr. Neary at the beginning of this, but, uh, with the potential weather front that's moving in, um, I've seen a lot of reports of possible power outages that could be coming our way in the next, uh, few days. And I just want to know what, where would communications come from? Um, I know it would be a lot on the fire department, the police departments, uh, for organizing that. But where should the community look, um, should a, a community emergency arise?
That's a great question, Mr. Metz. Uh, and thanks for addressing us with that. Uh, we will continue to, to use our, our social media platforms to, to address the city. I mean, if you don't have any power, i- it's, it's hard for people to, to get that message out. Uh, so that's, that's, it's a good question. You kind of caught me a little bit off guard. I'm not going to lie.
Alex, I don't know if you're on city council, but we had a hurricane that came through and knocked out the power for, for days, literally days. And so we did use social media. Uh, people have cell service. They can get, usually get it through their cell service. Uh, may not be able to get it through your Wi-Fi, but your cell service, that's one way we did it. We also, um, and, and having to hit a lot of, um, neighborhood groups. And so we were communicating with the leaders of the neighborhood groups to help spread the word in the neighborhoods too. We actually were writing, we went back to the old-fashioned thing and wrote little reports and telling people, here's what Stu's telling us, here's what we're hearing. So we'll probably do something like that and try to make that available. Maybe put them down in Hansbys and, uh, pharmacy and other places and let people know what's going on. Um, but that's what we did back then and, and that's about all you can do, I really think.
Correct.
Hopefully the cell service is not affected and you'll be able to at least get on your phone and get our website and our Facebook pages.
Wow, I'm coming to you.
Speaking of salt, I, I forgot to mention this in my report there, if you don't mind.
Sure, please.
The city, in conjunction with the, uh, Main Street Board and, uh, Joe Neary is helping with this. And actually, I think it's Joe, one of Joe's ideas on the main board has been providing, um, we, we wrote a letter to all our residents saying, hey, we're going to make available to you a bucket of salt, rock salt, that you can use for, for your steps and sidewalks, uh, when the climate weather comes. We've had quite a few responses. Galactic Chicken has given us the buckets. They, uh, give, um, I guess, I don't know what comes in the bucket, but whatever they use. Pickles, pickles come in a bucket. When they're gone, um, I guess it smells like rock salt and pickles now, but, uh, but the buckets have our sticker on it and several, several people, several businesses have taken advantage of it. I think a few more others are. What do you think about tin so far now? And so we told them that when they use it all, we'll come and fill it up for you until you, until, hopefully we don't need it anymore this, this season. So I forgot to mention that.
Uh, no, no worries at all. And, and I believe, maybe Mr. Halfhill could help me with this. He, isn't our city building, we have generator backup, yes? So the, the fire department, the police department, city hall, all have generator backup? All right. So if, if worse comes to worse, I, I'll throw out a six-strip outlet and you guys can charge your phones. Uh, but, uh, hopefully, uh, we, we dodge this storm. Thank you very much, Mr. Metz. Would anybody else like to approach council administration at the podium? Oh, good. Come on, Kathy. We love it.
Actually, it's a legal question because, um, then you may or may not remember or may not have seen it. One of our neighbors in our block is incredibly kind and generous, at least on one side of the street. His exercise is to shovel one entire side of the street. Now, with ice and snow and stuff, if someone else cleans off my side block and then falls, I'm still legally liable, right? Can I ask a dumb question? What, how can one negligently remove snow?
Well, it's like, you know, long.
Oh. Gotcha. Okay. Because I think it's an incredibly nice gesture and yes, it gives them exercise and he's happy to do it and it's great. But I keep, you know, I'd like to be able to keep my house and I'll be suited.
Right. Kentucky law is pretty clear that natural accumulation of ice and snow is what we're trying to, not why.
That's why I got my, oh, again.
Is that why?
Listen, it's hard enough to deal with a three-car parking bed in front of an alley. I don't want to bust with the fucker.
Kathy?
No.
She's shaking her head in a negative fashion. Thanks, Kathy. It's good to see you. Anybody else like to address council administration? We're going to close the podium in three, two, and the ca, the podium is closed. Moving right along to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business, council? Council? All right, and close it. Three, two. Unfinished business closed. And moving right along to new business. Do we have any new business to address council administration? Anyone? Oh, Member Lovins. It is a never-stopping issue. The city tag, she's asking about city stickers that were in. The city tag, she's asking about city stickers that were in... The issue is out of, out of state. Chief?
Look, Chief, step up, some people couldn't hear you. Um, I just, some, what we're talking about is that there are a lot of people who are living in the city who have Ohio license plates, and they're required under Kentucky law, was it fourteen days? After you move into a city or close to switch over to Kentucky plates? But the problem is, you have people that have leased cars, they have businesses in Ohio. You have people here temporarily...
We've, we're, yeah, VRVOs, Airbnb's, you know, coming just temporarily visiting. Um, one of the problems that we have is we don't have a selected number of cars that you can have. You can have as many as you want. So, I think we, I think we had a problem on Kenton, uh, several years ago, where a family had five cars. Five cars on, uh, the four-hundred block or three-hundred block of Kenton takes up a lot of parking space for everybody else. So, that's, that seemed to be an issue, and we couldn't help with that issue because you can have as many cars as you want. A lot of families are having more cars, three cars, four cars, more family members are living together, and, uh, taking up a lot of parking space, and just don't have that space. Well, we ran into a certain circumstance where cars that, uh, were cited. Um, we had a family that is divorced. One lives in Kentucky, dad lives in Ohio. He's by law, by the court, supposed to maintain vehicle insurance and registration for the vehicles where he lives, which is Ohio. But the daughters live in Kentucky and have to take the driver's licenses. So, that's a very tough issue. Yeah. Yeah, I was getting ready to write a ticket on one, and, uh, it was West Virginia tags out in front of a house. And the gentleman came outside, and I said, "Sir, are these your vehicles?" He said, "Yes." He said, "I'm only staying here, it was an Airbnb. My son is, uh, over at the Ronald McDonald House. He's just staying here temporarily, um, to care for Larry's son." So, so it's, yeah, but sometimes, we don't know the whole history unless we get out. We, we ask and, and talk to them and try to figure the human names out. So, it's, it's very difficult for us. We can, I mean, we can run. Well, when we, when we cite, yeah, we cited fifteen cars from, uh, Barry to Fallon, third, fourth, and fifth. And with the, with the Ohio tags, some were expired, a lot of expired tags, but some, you know, they have a right to, uh, appeal it. And if they have a legitimate reason, legitimate excuse, whether they're a student, or they were just visiting, or it was an Airbnb, then the chances are that they'll be dismissed. And it's something that we'll, you know, try to remember and not cite them again, uh, for an incident. It's very difficult. You gotta get... Well, out of the fifteen, I think, I might have to check, but I think half of them came in and paid, half didn't. Some were, uh, I guess we, I guess appealed, uh, because of them being students and just visiting temporarily. We, we hear every excuse under the book, that they're just visiting, or they're just a babysitter. Um, you know, we try to give warnings as a city, uh, that's just a twenty-five-dollar fine. And if, uh, I put out an email for the guys, anytime we have any, uh, actions as far as stop signs and, and things like that, uh, they have Ohio tags that, uh, you know, they're gonna have to, if, if they say they live in Dayton, if they're, you receive a state citation. Well, and then, we just ask, we just devolve a little bit more into the, into the, or just, I guess, acquire a little bit more information from the drivers. Where do you live? Do you live at this address in Dayton, that's how long have you lived there? Yeah. You can, and you can leave it up to a judge if you want. You can cite them for, for, to transfer your motor vehicle over, uh, if they are, if we feel like they are staying here. And, and leave it up to a judge, where most times, uh, you know, some of those get dismissed. Judges will dismiss this. It's a kind of revolving door. So, it's very difficult being at our location.
I'm a little education on this issue, and I think, actually...
Yeah, I did the, I did the PSA for...
Tell them what you tried to do, educate people about this.
Yeah, I, I did the, when I was with Campbell County, I did the, the PSA for the, for the states on the Freddie Free Road program. That's why we try to get information out as best we can. You know, uh, on anonymous tip line, um, to report this. You can report it individually. You don't have to rely on the police department. You just need an address, you need a tag, um, to report it. And they'll, they'll check voter registry, uh, look into it, they will look into it. But it's been a little bit difficult, I think, the program's kind of slowed down a little bit just to, due to the help, uh, the states and financial, uh, people working on this. I think it's something that's not being...
But you also did a flyer too, that you distributed to the apartment...
We did a flyer, uh, as far as the tapestry and gateway. Uh, they have a monthly, um, educational thing. I guess they put out for news and stuff like that. So, we try to get information out, um, to, um, what you have to do for the Freddie Free Road. If you are living in Ohio, or you're living in Kentucky, you have the Ohio, Ohio tags. You have, you know, fourteen days to register your vehicle, get everything transferred. Because everybody down there, you know, it's just, you don't know if he's visiting, we don't know. There's a lot of U C students, A K U students, and it's just, we can try the best we can just, uh, to try to keep, you know, keep tabs on them. So, I mean, as far as coming from Ohio, they...
I will say that on the issue of car parking on the street, we have in the past probably six months towed and cited, um, I'm sure dozens and dozens and dozens of cars. I've got rid of cars that have been sitting around for years.
Yes.
So, we are on top of that, and we get calls all the time from council members and residents saying, "This car's been here for a week or a month." And we get to go out there and...
Some of the ones that I've, I, I even cited, just, uh, that, uh, Friday, were gone, no, no longer here. There was one, uh, I think in the two-hundred block of Fifth, but I went down and I went to Foster Hawks and go see if it's still down there. And, uh, we didn't tow that day because of the snow, things like that, just not good. So, trucks didn't mount, and we went back to check on them, and they were gone. You, you're not allowed to do that legally. You're not allowed to, yeah. Yeah, we'll stop, yeah, you have to have some type of infraction, whether it be speeding or stop sign. You can't just stop somebody who's lying. You have to have another... Yeah, yeah, you just, you just can't stop just because they have Ohio tags. You gotta have that, a traffic enforcement issue. And then, you can evolve it. Which I, which I preach to the guys, that, you know, go beyond the traffic stop and look, look a little bit further into, you know, Ohio tags. Yep. It's very di, it's very difficult. We are, we are working on it, and, um, we are addressing it. We just can't stop because they have Ohio tags. So, if we're doing traffic stops and things like that, we will, we will address them. We will look into further neighborhood complaints with Ohio tags. Yeah. Or if we, I mean, if we're out on random patrol and we see two Ohio tags parked in front of a house, you know, it might be some to devolve a little bit further, maybe knock on some doors, and see if they actually live there, and they're Airbnb.
Camp lit from financial situation, it's important that they are registered in Kentucky, because we get some of those funds coming back into our budget to help pay for police officers and everything else. So, it is important.
Just a question, um, what is the motivation? It's just that it's so much more expensive for registering?
Yes. Taxes are higher because of Kentucky law.
Yeah, it's a lot more expensive to have a car in Kentucky than it is in Ohio.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Lovins, you sat aside. Yeah, we appreciate that about you. You had a new business you brought to council. Before we close new business, I am gonna mention that the Bengals are playing in the Super Bowl on next Sunday. Not this Sunday, but next. And the city is going to have a kickoff party, uh, at the Monument on the Saturday before. We don't wanna interfere with anybody's Super Bowl parties. So, we're gonna have the Saturday before, the day before, we'll be at the Monument with games and music and, uh, maybe, uh, some beer. Uh, so, we'd love to see everybody out wearing your orange and black. I, I, and Mr. Dutterfeld, I, I look forward to seeing you with your tie there. And, uh, we're gonna root on our Bengals to, to, to bring home the Super Bowl fifty-six. That is all I have for new business. Anybody else? All right, do we have a reason for executive session? All right, so we have a reason for executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session? Mr. Volter's moved, so I have a second. Second by Member Neiman. All in favor? All right, we are moving into executive session.